Good evening, my special meeting of the Lake Orion Village Council to order. Roll call, please.
President Van Portheim.
President.
President Pro Tim Matheson.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond. I can't see you. Councilmember Hammond.
He's muted.
Here.
Councilmember Hobbs.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Ranville.
Here.
Councilmember Rock. President Van Portheim, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The purpose of this meeting, the special meeting is to discuss the DDA's fiscal year 2020-21 budget, and to review Village Council fiscal year 2020, that's 21 goals and objectives. I'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time?
We have no public comments.
Thank you. Item five, items for consideration. Budget proposal for the DDA fiscal year 2020-21. Who'd like to start? Joe, Molly, is there Mr. Young?
Molly. Sure. Go ahead, Molly.
Right. Hello. Hello, Village Council members. What we're going to present to you today is the Main Street Committee's work plan overview. We started out with the strategies that were set by, the priorities that were set by the DDA Board. And those were pedestrian safety over here on the left. Can you see my screen? I'm hoping you can. Pedestrian safety and lighting, parking and alternatives, walkability, and farmer's market. And then, at the end of March, we had the stay home, stay safe order that kind of changed things. We redid the budget a little bit, each committee did, and I'm going to have each of the committees talk to you about the plans, and then I will go over the budget after that. We'll start with Bill Coquinos, talking about the organization committee. Go ahead, Bill.
Why do I have to go first?
Lucky you.
It's like, it's like school. I'm in the front of the class. Hello, everybody. I hope everybody's safe and well. Heard we had a little police excitement this weekend. That was very good. Thank God Jerry wasn't around. Hi, Joe. Okay, from the organizational committee, we've been working on a few different things, but one of the bigger things we've been working on is trying to figure out how we can help other committees and do things in the right way. We have established, basically, by establish, we've been approved, still have some light of final things to do with the Friends of the DDA. This group is a 501(c)(3). We were approved in March. We're in the process now of trying to work some things out. But we want to work with the Board, we want to work with the, the DDA Board as well as the Village Board, to do different things during the course of the year to help generate funds, and to generate funds that will be used for non-budgeted items. We're looking at having, and this could change, five to seven volunteers on the committees that we'll have. We're also looking to realign our volunteer recognition format and how we schedule it, things like that. And by changing it, we're looking at, we don't know if we should do hours, we don't know if we should do events. It's, it's one of those pretty touchy things. What do we do for people, that kind of thing? Instead of maybe having a party or giving them a plaque or something like that, but that's something down the road right now. We are getting our, rest of our bylaws for the Friends reviewed and approved. We're going to be working with the businesses as well, and having meetings so that we know what the businesses can do, and what this Friends group can do to help business. And that even means by if somebody's doing something, we can help support them by showing up, similar to the Chambers ambassadors, that show up to different events, ribbon cuttings and something like that. We'd also like to create a calendar, and we would be taking the responsibility of putting this calendar together for Village events, so that way, everybody has a calendar. If something's added, it's put on almost immediately, so that the businesses are made aware of the events that are coming up. We need, we believe that, one of the biggest problems we have is that with the businesses, is that they're not getting, they're not known, they're not knowing what's going on within the Village until somebody comes up and says, hey, you know this. So we're trying to do the best we can to communicate to the Village businesses of what's going on, as well as the Village, I don't want to say Village people, because you guys will laugh, the Village residents. So we're working on that, the recognition event. Again, this is something that we're trying to figure out, not only how we can build and get more volunteers, but how we can recognize ones, whether specific ones or, or everybody. For the volunteer area, we're looking at people that are marketing, real estate experts and business owners. And we're trying to look at these peoples possibly being part of the Board. We're looking at promotions, we're looking at a representative from one of the businesses that may be able to come up with ideas that the Friends can use, as well as the organizational committee. And we're also looking at getting a master gardener to not only beautify the Flitton Broadway, but other places as we go along. We just have a name right there, right now, Sydney. We're looking again to get somebody off the DDA Board to also be on this committee. So we're looking for the Friends to have like seven or eight people there. I personally would like to see a couple people from outside the Village in it, who have expertise in, in different areas that we can use. But that's what we're doing with the organizational committee. It's been difficult to meet, as you guys all well know, but we're working on everything we can do to make it work. And we'd want to make sure that we are successful, not only for the organizational committee, but for all the committees, working not only with the DDA Board, but also, also with the Village Board. And that completes me. Any questions?
Have one.
I knew you would.
Hi, Bill. Good evening.
Ken, how are you?
Good. Hey, who is the Chair of the Organization Committee, or is there one?
I don't think we have one, but I think I'm it, because there's only like three or four of us.
Okay. The, the Friends, that's that 501(c)(3) that was put together, correct?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. All right, and so if I understand it correctly, they'll come up with projects, and then there would be another five to nine volunteers per committee on those projects, correct?
Yeah, well, what we're, what we're, what we're looking to do is working with Molly. We don't, we don't want to come in with this Friends group and say, gee, we want to put up 15 signs and say hi. We want to work with Molly and say, what do you need, what can we do to put something out there that can help you that you didn't think about it in the budget, or this, this isn't going to work this way, but can we do something else? I mean, maybe one of the projects we would end up doing someday would be like, put up the people, kids in the Village banners that are graduating from the high school. I know a lot of, I know a lot of towns and townships I'm seeing are doing that kind of a thing. Or if there's a need, you know, whether or not Molly's computers break down, and we have money in the bank to buy a computer, because it's not in her budget. And instead of her realigning her budget, we could come in and, and help out as best we can. And, you know, things like that. You know, maybe there's a park bench that needs to be bought, or, or helped out to find and try to get something like that.
Hey, Bill, you mentioned communicating to the businesses. Do you do that currently, or is that something that's still?
No, it's, 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 I, you'd have to ask Molly how that works, or Susan, I don't know how that works with you guys. We're looking to sort of take over a little bit of that, as far as getting these businesses involved and getting them to know what's going on. So I don't know what's done right now. I know, you know, I know that Molly does a great job of trying to get everybody, but maybe not everybody has a computer or, you know, looks at it.
And one last comment, the Master Gardener, we currently have, gosh, I'm trying to think of the gal's name, that does our Four Corners.
Darby.
Yeah. Please be sure to ask her if she has interest, just out of respect, because she's done.
Yeah, I, I actually, Ken, I really don't know where the name came up from. I wasn't, I was out for January, February, and part of March. So I'm not exactly sure where her name came from, but I think if we did anything at all, we'd put it out to the different people and see who has ideas and, you know, have them come up with a little drawing like you would if you had a person doing landscaping in your house. Okay, just some ideas. I mean, it doesn't have to be pictures, but something that we could visual, or they could tell us that we know what was going on. Any other questions?
Just took, I, the 501(c)(3) has not been approved yet by the IRS. It's an existing Michigan nonprofit corporation, but we're waiting for the IRS to. They haven't denied it. We're just waiting, and they're not fully operational right now.
Matt, we got the, we got the letter at the very end of March.
Did you?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did.
I didn't get a copy of it.
I have a copy of, for you in the office.
Does that mean that we are, Molly, it is a 501(c)(3) at this time?
We do have an official 501(c)(3), as, as Bill mentioned.
Anthony, you had your hand up, sir.
Yeah, just a little quick, Bill, I know that we had been doing this, and I, I'm hoping that we can continue it. The ambassador program, talking about getting the word out to businesses, breaking up the downtown into several of us from the DDA Board, or from your, your group, or whatever, to take seven or eight or 10 businesses and get this information to those businesses. When something is coming up, for example, I have a south end of town, I have maybe 10 businesses. I take it and I talk to those people. So that was the ambassador program, and I'm just curious if that, if you know about that, or if that's something that you want to go into, or what you're trying to do.
I, I didn't know anything about it, Anthony. So I mean, we could, the more people, the merrier, I mean, merrier, we can work with you guys as well. If somebody can't make something, then, you know, that next person can just fill in as well. So I use the ambassadors group more as an example of just something that we'd like to get the people to do, because we need to have. Okay, I've been in this town for 20 years, and a lot of people don't know who you are, or even who Ken is, okay? And within the Village itself. Sorry, Ken, I didn't mean to do that. So we need to get people's faces out there, so. By the way, thanks for the shirt.
You're welcome. So, hey, Anthony, before we go too much further, Anthony, your discussion was very broken up and reverberated as if you were using a phone and your computer at the same time. Did it sound like that to everybody else as well?
I could hear some background stuff.
Yeah, just saying.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. Can you hear me okay now?
No.
I can, but I'm getting off.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Please proceed, Molly.
Am I done, Molly?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Bill.
All right, next we have the Promotions Committee. And Monica Scorsia is our Promotions Committee Chair. She's here to present.
Well, hello, everybody. It's good to see everyone. So Promotions Committee is getting hit a little bit hard this year with everything going on. It's been a little, it's been an interesting year for us. But we do have some plans, and hopefully, now that things are turning around, we will get back out there and get some promotions going. So we're really going to recommend to be heavy online promotion of businesses and heavy use of the downtown dollars, because we figure that's the best way right now to get people out there and to get them to see us and know what's going on. We were talking, just actually, I think it was last week, and we were talking about the gazebo series, which we still would like to have. But obviously, it's going to be something different. We're thinking maybe of just cutting the seasons in half, so we don't have as many. And then maybe instead of having it at the park, on some days, we would just run it through on TV, even if it's new ones, or maybe something from the past years that we've had at the, at the gazebo. So we're looking to do that this year instead. And then, of course, by doing that, we'll be cutting our costs. The Halloween parade, we had a lot of good discussion about that and how we can run it. If the kids aren't going to be able to be out there walking, we even had suggested cars and other types of things, that maybe a parade of cars that they could have. Maybe we all just give, you know, one bag of candy to each kid, maybe donated from each of the retailers. And do it that way. We're going to cut the, cut out the cider and donuts, so that's going to also be a savings for us. But we definitely want to still have something. And then we're, you know, at that point, we were thinking maybe of having even more photo shots, but I don't know if that's something we'll be able to do this year. We're still, when it goes into the holidays, we're definitely going to have the Shop Small Saturday to help with the holidays. I mean, most of that cost is covered by American Express, and I think it really does help. We're just, we're also going to continue the Holiday Passport, because I thought that was very successful out there. Sing and Stroll is another thing that might be challenging, might be just something we have on on TV. Again, waiting to see what's, what's going to be going on at that time. And then we also have the Local Focus Photo Contest, which is, again, an online thing and easy to, to have. And also, again, our Shop to Win, that's something that we will continue also, because that's donations from the shops, and maybe we can look at and see how we can not make it, have them to have to pay so much money or donate so much shop owner, or restaurant owner. And then unfortunately, the Flower Fair this year is, is canceled, as everybody knows. Sad, but had to happen because just no way to have that this year. But we are going to definitely, you know, go for 2021 and, and have it done. We did refund all of the down deposits to everybody, because we felt that it really wasn't their fault that we weren't having it, and we did do that. We also gave them back their $5.00. That was for the application fee. We thought that was only fair. And we are thinking that we would like to still try to have a farmer's market of some sort. Maybe it's during the concerts, and maybe we could have one of the vendors that we didn't get to have at the Flower Fair. Maybe they could come out and just be part of that also, and get the restaurants involved. Also Lucky's, and we're looking to maybe have it on that street where Lucky says. So maybe it's a little more visible. And then we do have the Lake, the hashtag Lake Orion Lucky gift card giveaway that we're, we're doing at this point. We are working on a Welcome Back event, hopefully soon. We have the hashtag Lake Orion loyal, low, low, I can't say it, which is going to be, you know, helping people during this construction that we're having going on. And then again, like I said, the, the farmer's market, we'd like to do a test run with the gazebo series. And 24th Street side, and, and have it down on that area. And then the last thing that, definitely going into January, February, March, we're going to do Restaurant Week. And does anyone have any questions?
Hey, hi, Monica. Thanks. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I was curious, just what the thought is. It says action. You got your goals, objectives, and then action. It says, recommend heavy online promotions and heavy use of downtown dollars. Does that just mean like extreme amounts, or?
No, I think that what's, Molly can help me on that. I think that's pretty much those, the gift certificates that we have, like the $10 gift certificates, that they spend 50. I think we're looking at that when it, when we're saying about the heavy use of the downtown dollars. It's like, you know, if they spend $50, they get a $10 gift card, you know, that they can use at any of the restaurants. And traditionally, we, we normally are asking for donations from our businesses to, to help us do a lot of the promotional campaigns that we do. And we did not think that during the shutdown, it would be appropriate to ask for those donations. And that's why we're shifting to the use of the downtown dollars.
Okay. And the column of criteria I have has a little bit different information than what you had, Monica. Like down in the new initiatives, it has children's art exhibit, and your data did not.
No, I, I think we put that on hold for this year, the, for the children's art exhibit, because the schools aren't in, and, yeah, I don't, I don't have that on mind. So we, we definitely, that was probably something that we're putting on hold till further, maybe till next year, but it's something we're going to do, we want to do.
Right. And I'm really happy to see the Welcome Back event, because I think it's all important that we have some type of a push to help the phase in, whatever it may be, in the new normal. But I noticed in your Restaurant Week, at the very last portion of that column, it says January, February, March. And that might be the right months, I'm not sure, but I would think that that might be the push that we need as soon as we get the phase back in. So is it a possibility that you're looking at that as maybe even being October, November, December?
Sure, we can, we can change that. That's just in the past, that's when we've ran it. So that's definitely something we can do, and we can move it up to October.
Okay.
Also, the, when we talked to Laura Young, is one of the, she's an owner of a restaurant, and her, her advice was to do it during those months. She says that the restaurants are always wishing they had more business during those months. So that's kind of why we, we were taking her direction on that for the calendar items. She's one of our committee members.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I didn't see the Restore M24 on here.
I think that's part of the Lake Orion loyalty, isn't it?
That's, in the marketing, the brand marketing committee, we, we cover that. The Promotions Committee.
Are you getting some promotional events, though, like the Taco Tuesdays and Blues? Is that still happening, the Blues Thursdays?
That's the, the Lake Orion Lucky is the, it is a gift card promotion that is giving away $50, May, and for six months. And it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And they will be, and I'm going to go over it during the marketing program, if you guys can wait. She just included, just so that you would know what the promotions are that we're doing. But I'll get into it more.
Any other questions? Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Moving on to design. Molly?
Thank you. All right, Anthony is here to talk about the Design Committee plans.
All right, so our goals and objectives are to review the parking map, create a lighting plan, oversee completion of the Slater Street parking lot, adding 25 spaces, create walkability inspection and maintenance plan. We're, you know, recommending the completion of the parking lot and the pathway. Hey, Molly, can you expand that window over a little bit? Thank you. Modifying facade grant, emphasis on lighting, and seasonal decorating. Also money set aside for maintenance and repairs. Just real quick, we discussed a lot about, my feeling is that we need to have some sort of a program to have some dollars for this, because maintenance and repair are things that we don't, we don't get to enough, so. Partner initiatives, lighting contractors, the Village and DPW, again, that goes a lot to do with the lighting and the repairs, the maintenance. Initiatives are going to be to create a lighting plan, lighting in children's park. We talked a lot about doing some sort of lighting down the walkway, for safety reasons, obviously. Also to bring those people from the parking lot up to the main road and, and back and forth. Retrofit lighting to take the downtown lighting, the lampposts, and actually retrofit them so lighting is coming to the ground, as opposed to just kind of going wherever. And pedestrian pathway lighting, really focusing on lighting the walkways to all of our parking lots. That was a big need and question from a lot of people this year, or last year, and that we need to improve that. Finish Slater Street parking lot and pathway, efficient lighting. Pathway is regarding the pathway from that parking lot next to the fire department to the road there. So that's something that we want to at least get the pathway and get lighting done. Review facade grant, add lighting program. Lighting program we're talking about is some sort of maybe DA funds where businesses would get an option to have a light on their building. We would have so much money for each business, it'd cost more, they would have to make that up that different. But that way, we could create lighting in all the buildings downtown, specifically the ranch room place, to improve that. See Standards of Design Guide, including preferred materials, construction methods. That really is what we've talked about, is trying to have some standardizations. Again, I think Kevin Penn has asked for this. Some standardizations say, hey, these are what our guidelines are, this is what we would like to see if you're constructing or repairing a building. And reduce seasonal decorating plans and budgets. Any questions, anyone?
I have, I have a couple of questions, sorry. You mentioned modifying the facade grant, which I'm real happy to see, because I think it, it needs to have more depth to it, as far as what's really being done, and the historical character preservation in our community that a lot of people have mentioned. I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see the retrofitting of the lighting. I've been a big advocate of light pollution in our community. There's way too much, and to have downcast lighting would be helpful. The, and when you mentioned lighting and lighting and lighting in your design program, recently, and I just want to mention this, I walked around a community, and it was just, I think, last week, Thursday, and I counted 10 trees that need replacement in the Village. Four of them are like missing. Another four of them are split and dead. Another two of them are just gone awful. And I'm not an arborist, but maybe we might consider having somebody that knows better take a look at that, because it could be a case where you might decide, take them all out and replace them with a better growth product. I don't think that those are the right trees that should have been put in there. And I actually posed it way back when, oh, I forget the engineering firm's name was that did the our streetscape program there, Wade Trim, I think it was. Anyways, I thought the trees could have been a better brand. But we've struggled for a number of years now, about, what, eight years? Trying to get those trees to grow, and it's not working well. And I've done an item four in your new initiatives, your Standards of Design Guide. I think that's, and it doesn't mention it, but I think that's that historical character again, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Right, yep, yep. Trying to create something that says, look, we want to keep the, the historic value of the buildings, and we want to, but at the same time, we also want to encourage that if we're going to replace siding, maybe there's a better product that keeps character, but lasts longer. As opposed to, you know, the, the opposite of that. We give money, and then they're putting a product that in five years, it failed.
So I assume those would be like recommendations to the Planning Commission to consider for rewrites in our ordinance.
Yeah, exactly.
That's it for me. Anyone else? And so moving on to economic vitality, Molly.
Thank you. All right, Matt Shell is here um, to talk about economic vitality.
All right, uh, some of our goals and objectives are to gather anniversaries and set a calendar for recognizing anniversaries for all of the downtown businesses. Recruitment, uh, show properties, highlight a specific property. I think currently the plan is to highlight one oh two South Broadway. Um, and then we do uh, FaceTime live videos when we can be in person. We have to come up with a particular plan under the current circumstances. Then we are working for developing recog- recommendations for guidelines for the DDA board uh, for new developments. Ties into what Anthony mentioned with the historical. Um, so this is a little bit repetitive, but uh, current initiatives. Molly, can you scroll back up a little bit? I guess we touched on all the current initiatives. Partner initiatives, MSOC, Molly, can you touch on that?
Um, we were planning to um, contacted Main Street Oakland County um, about partnering with us to help us um, highlight one oh two South Broadway, which if you're not familiar with that address, it's right at the corner of Front and Broadway, right next to um, the new high rise, it's the, the one on the corner, the empty building on the corner. We'd like to um, highlight that one and see if we can get it filled.
Right. Um, and then new initiatives are the business anniversary recognition that I mentioned. Um, as well as recruitment and Facebook Live. One oh two South Broadway recruitment package. And continuing the guideline development for new project. You want to have any questions?
Anthony. Mr. Weird.
All right, oh, there goes. Was it, it wasn't unmuting. Um, I I like the uh, anniversaries for businesses. I think that's really good. Um, I just real quickly touch on John Schaller. When we were out at uh, his uh, event and there's a book that actually has every anniversary and every, you know, major league pitcher had something great happen. If somebody made the biggest cupcake ever, it was in this book and business can use it, businesses use it to market and create days. And those days are celebratory days to drive business. So this is another kind of form of that that could be used as a thing that we do as a highlight. Maybe it's three times a week, you know, whatever. To highlight our businesses, but we could use this every year uh, to do that. So that's, that's a really cool thing. I'm glad that you're doing that. And then uh, the DDA guidelines uh, regarding the construction goals, I think uh, you and I and Molly should probably uh, have maybe a confab at some point. And kind of pick up your brains on that uh, and talk about that. And then I just, I just wanted to, not that this is directly related to this, but I just wanted to remind Molly about one oh two South Broadway. We still have that graffiti on the graphics down there. So um, we need to get that taken care of. And I I apologize, but when one oh two came up, it just, it it resonated with me. Oh, that there's graffiti on that, on that building. So, so just a side note.
I have a question. Uh, since we're talking about the MSOC and the one oh two South Broadway, which is the old wagon wheel building. Um, do we even know what the, how was your marketing? I mean, what's, what's it supposed to be? Or is it, it can be anything. I mean, has a better decision made? I mean, how do you market it if we don't know what the product is gonna be?
Yes, I could.
Yeah, sure, Molly.
Sure, thank you. Um, the, I believe that we'd have to have a conversation with the property owner. Um, we'd have to get him, uh, the property owner involved um, along with Main Street Oakland County. Um, this particular committee, um, they normally are doing kind of market research and and um, of all of the committees, um, really there's a lot of um, collaboration with Main Street Oakland County to get the information that we need. Um, they, uh, the county annually does a community showcase and they, they are highlighting properties um, in each of the um, downtown areas across Oakland County. So they've got a team already in place and I'm hoping that we can work with them um, in this case for this building.
And then I have one other question. Uh, I know I, a council member, maybe two have said to me, they don't know anything about the Schaller experience. And I haven't either. Uh, I've been waiting for like that opportunity. I'm not sure I missed anything, but is there some type of a presentation from that group? I mean, it's like.
Yeah, you must not have been at the meeting, Ken. We had a, they had a, they came back and had did a presentation right away. Uh, um, to the DDA board.
Okay, what about council?
Um, it looks like Anthony has something to say.
Yes, sir. Anthony?
So um, I would be happy to do a presentation. Uh, probably Joan and I would be a good one, uh, do a presentation to the council. And also would be happy to uh, duplicate my materials. And uh, discuss some of our homework with anybody and talk about um, some of the initiatives that we uh, our group has talked about doing. Um, obviously some of those things got put on hold a little bit for obvious reasons. But um, I think that uh, there is four or five things. There's a million things in in this information. But there's four or five really key things that if you've seen any of the things I've done, Ken, with my business lately. Um, there are some pretty good examples of John's stuff at work. Um, with the videos I've done, with some of that stuff is a big part of what he talks about. And to give you an idea, prior to using his concept, my average Facebook post reached about three to five hundred. My average Facebook post reaches about seven thousand people now over a month. So, um, just really simple things and uh, those things can be done relatively easily. And so I think that I would be happy to talk to the council about that, show them what we learned and and what could be put to practice.
Yes, if you could please share that good experience, because we've all been waiting. Molly?
Um, the community reinvention team originally, the plan was that they would be doing presentations monthly um, at the DDA Business Partners Meeting. Um, and it just, you know, um, the stay home order has kind of upset the apple cart a little bit. Um, we're hoping to be able to get back together on that, but we didn't feel that um, the information the community reinvention might have to share um, that the businesses would be ready for it yet. Um, but I will pass along to them that the village council is interested in hearing what they've learned.
Oh, extremely. Um, there's a lot of money spent. I mean, council, wouldn't you folks like to know what that is that was experienced? Yeah. Thank you. Anything else, Molly?
Um, next, the branding committee. All right. All right, so um, they're, they're planning a layered marketing plan and the top goals are to increase brand awareness with the LOL campaign. Um, to increase online presence and engagement and to entice people to support downtown merchants during the M twenty four construction and while they are ordered to stay home. Um, we plan to put in um, print ads. We'll be supporting the Orion Living Magazine, um, two pages um, each quarter in that magazine. Um, Sherman Publications, um, we're going to have ads in there for the LO Lucky um, promotion, which is the promotion that we're doing during the construction. And then next year, we'll be supporting uh, the Flower Fair with some print ads. Um, and then C and G, that's uh, we put um, half page inserts, so that'll happen next year. Um, print ads um, for the next fiscal year will cost seven thousand six hundred and seventy nine dollars. Um, print collateral um, includes posters, postcards, flyers, inserts, um, direct mail, uh, like postcards. Um, passports and and then updating all of our graphics. We use um, Canoo Circle to update those graphics. Um, this um, poster here is an example of what the Flower Fair poster would have looked like had we been able to have um, a Flower Fair this year. Um, print colla- collateral will cost seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars this year. Online, um, the schools, uh, if we want to send anything through the schools, we have to pay for a peach jar, um, digital flyer. Peach jar is the school's program. Um, we always um, have um, we put our directory map on the twenty front street E ticket. So they, so um, one of the things that we know about twenty front street is that it bring, when it is open, it brings in people from all over the area, not just locally. So we want to make sure that they know um, that there are a lot of restaurants and shops and um, things that they can enjoy while they're here um, at at twenty front street. We're also going to be paying for um, some prize software. Um, it um, connected to our social media and it's part of our website. And um, we can program it um, to collect um, points for um, different things that um, people do. For instance, we can, we can um, as part of the contest, we can say, you know, take a picture of um, tacos that you got from a restaurant for Taco Tuesday night. We can, we can tell them that they will earn points for um, giving reviews, um, writing a review of a business. Um, for sharing a page, for liking, um, just different things. And that, all of those points are um, go into uh, the random drawing. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from May to November during the construction um, project. Um, just to um, continue to um, get people interested in being downtown. So um, different things that we can, we can change it every week. Um, during, during that program and it's primarily using the software. Um, we also will have some targeted display ads. Um, those are normally there, they are ads that turn up on your phone. Um, and we'll use them for the lucky program and um, we're planning to create um, a a downtown like brand specific mobile app. Um, we will also have some Google, Google ads um, that show up. They kind of show up on the side of Facebook. Um, and, and when you're, when you're in different um, websites that have ads that show up, we might show up in those. Um, of course, videos and social media. Um, web ads and other other things that have to do with um, updating our website and things like that. That's, all of that is going to cost approximately twenty five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. A lot of this is in support of, of the businesses. Um, a lot of this, this advertising.
Ask a question. Those twenty five thousand two eighty. Uh, what was it prior?
What was it pre? We were not doing as much um, prior to this and we did not have it all put into the marketing budget. So I would have to get back to you about that. It was divided up amongst um, all the events and um, and I don't have the total. I, I mean, I can tell you that we spent um, this year, we probably spent about this much um, amongst our, our promotions. But I'll have to get back to you to be specific, Ken. Um, outdoor, uh, we have the message board um, up in Oxford that's been very successful for Flower Fair. Um, and then we also use, um, we like the use of digital billboards because we can kind of um, layer a few different messages um, into the same billboard. Um, billboards cost, will cost us four thousand one hundred dollars next year. Um, signs. During M twenty four's construction and also during um, this shutdown, we want to utilize um, signs that say we're open, we're open during, we're open for business and all of the businesses will receive a sign. Um, we've been discussing um, grouping them together and moving them around. Um, so they show up at different, in, at different locations just to bring attention. Um, we want people to continue to know that our businesses are open and physical signs is a kind of an old school way to make sure that they are getting the message. Um, this sign here, the green one that has the dragon and it says event participant, um, that's actually a sign that would kind of be, um, it kind of um, comes off of the side of the window and should, I think. It, it, um, it's a three dimensional, it's kind of a dimensional sign. Um, so it looks a little bit different and it attracts attention. Um, when we start having events again, that is one of the signs that we want to put up um, at each business. So um, people know that those businesses are involved in whatever the event or promotion is. Um, creating all these signs, uh, we plan uh, for this to cost approximately two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we are planning to um, buy fifty two hundred dollars a week for twenty four weeks. It'll cost um, next year, it'll cost three thousand two hundred dollars. Um, and that is um, that is for purchasing the gift cards that we'll be giving away during the Lake Orion Lucky contest. Um, this is, this is where normally we would um, be requesting donations um, from businesses and we don't feel that that is appropriate right now. So instead, we're going to be um, purchasing um, the gift cards from the businesses. That is a way that we can support them and then um, later on, when the, when business, when the customers win and they are able to use those cards, we'll be supporting again. So um, that's what we're planning to do there. So it will cost um, forty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars um, next year to do the marketing. Um, to do everything that we've discussed there. Are there any questions?
I have a couple, if someone else does. John, go ahead. John, you have a question, sir?
Leaning in just so I can hear better. Some mics are very low.
Okay.
I, I uh, I, I support marketing for downtown merchants and everything. They're hurting, kind of hurt real bad. Uh, major sign up there by twenty four and the bank would be great. Uh, I think fifty thousand dollars is a lot of fluff uh, to advertise for, everybody knows where all our merchants are. Um, I think uh, we're crunch time now and to spend that kind of money is not uh, not good.
Teresa?
Yeah, I was just curious. Uh, I know you have like a development of an app on there. Um, what is the cost of that and what is the vision for that app? Because most of the apps I'm familiar with for look, for communities are more like um, business related or services related, like, oh, hey, pay your water bill online, report graffiti online, something like that. So what's the vision for that?
Um, thank you for asking that question. Um, the vision is um, for it to be um, somewhat interactive. We want to make sure that when people come into town, if they use that app, they can find the parking lots easily. Um, so that they know where those are. Uh, we want to be able to have the businesses um, be able to post their specials. So as people come in, they can see a list of the specials that are, and offers that are available for the businesses. Um, have a, a quick link for the um, menus for the restaurants. Um, what the events are um, for this week or that day. Um, that's the kind of thing that we're hoping we'll be able to do. And we were um, budgeting, I believe it was around five thousand dollars for that um, for that mobile app.
And then who would be keeping, so if the, the specials are, you know, constantly changing, is there go, one person designated then to always be updating that?
The dream is that the businesses would be. The dream is that the businesses would be able to do that themselves, that that would become a tool that they would be able to use. It's, we're going to have to see what we end up with when, when we start talking to developers. We haven't, we haven't started talking to them yet, so we can add another update. Looks like Anthony is.
Anthony, sir?
So just, and I throw this out there just from an outsider's perspective, not my own. Many of you probably know who Joey Doggo is, the owner of the Carpet Guys. Big company, $30 million a year company. Came out and did videos for the Michigan Club. And I got to talking to him and he said, works from his mouth, that Lake Orion is one of the best marketing communities it's ever seen. He said that what we're doing, we need to keep doing and we need to grow up, expand upon it because he said other communities don't do what we do. So I just want to throw that out there. When we're looking at budget numbers and things, people are seeing it. This is someone whose, you know, business is employed, lives in St. Clair Shores. He knows about Lake Orion. Obviously, he does have a home in Oxford, but he knows about Lake Orion for its marketing. And to give you a little background on him, he owns a million billboards up and down I-75, very involved in that kind of thing. Has a marketing staff that thinks $250,000 a year that he just paid just to do this kind of stuff. And he thought our marketing was really good and that we should keep building on it. So I thought that was a good thing to throw out there so you could hear that from somebody from the outside who is a very successful person in marketing.
And John, I wanted to, I wanted to address your comment on the, the number, the $50,000 that we have in there. I wanted to point out that in the past, we've had the marketing dollars kind of split up amongst events and, and, you know, just all, in a lot of different places. So when we put it all together, about 24,000 of the money that went into the total for brand marketing is the marketing money that we normally spend on events. We also planned to spend a little bit more this year because of the M24 construction project. We wanted to make sure we had more dollars pointed towards bringing attention to our businesses for this year.
I.
I think.
Thank you. The Carpet Guy example for me is good, but I don't know what that is. He said, "Our community does a great job marketing." How? I mean, what is he talking about? Facebook? Is he talking about digital sign messages? I'm just curious because I'm trying to quantify it. So if there was more information, that would be great. I would love to talk to that gentleman even to understand it better. I do have one comment on your page 22, no, I'm sorry, page 24. It says, "50 dollars times four days per week or $200 a week times 24 weeks." That's $4,800 to me. I don't, the math doesn't work.
Between, it's, well, that's because it starts in May and ends in November. So the July, August, September, October, November, those, that's the, what those numbers are for.
So that's like, okay. 12 weeks, that's three months, July, August, September, times 200 is $2,400 bucks. 16 weeks. Okay. Thank you. That's weird.
Yes.
Just real quick, Ken, yeah, I'd be happy to talk to him and see if I could get him to kind of elaborate on what he was talking about. But I think he was talking about just in general, being someone that doesn't live here and lives in St. Clair Shores and seeing our marketing. I think that's where he was going with that. He thought it was pretty impressive for our community.
Mr. Narsh?
Yeah, I know, you know, we've, we've talked about this. We're looking at the budget and we've, we've kind of got, it's a double-edged sword. We've got a difficult municipal finance picture coming at us for governments. It's uncharted waters for all of us. And at the same time, all of our businesses, as we open up Michigan, are coming out at the same time. And we've got businesses all over the state of Michigan, all over the United States that are going to want to try to get business back again. I think we're competing with that. I love the idea, actually, of the app. I've always wanted to see an app for Lake Orion, for the Village of Lake Orion and for our DDA, for our businesses, for, I'd love to see the Village of Lake Orion and be able to have a presence in that with our lakes and our, our parks and our other aspects. But I love the idea of an app. But I, I think, and I've thought a lot about this. I, I think we have to be aggressive a little bit in our budget that we normally wouldn't be. It's risky, but at the same time, our businesses are all but dying. And this COVID response was appropriate. I see it on the emergency responder end. I've got three friends that were near death themselves and came back. Luckily, none of them died. So I, I see that. But I also know what it's doing to our business community. And we're also going to be fighting the M24 challenges that we have ahead. So we've, we've got two major challenges coming at us. And I think as a council and as a DDA, we've, we've really got to be aggressively out there helping our businesses. I think we got to do it fiscally responsible. I think we have to take a look at every dime. But I guess I'm kind of in favor of, that's a big part of our downtown. People know about Lake Orion. I always joke that we used to be the place you end up. And lately, we've become the place you go to. And I like being that destination for Lake Orion. I like that. And I think we got to keep that cutting edge. We're going to be in competition with a lot of neighboring communities as we go forward, as we open up. It's going to be in phases. Our restaurants are going to be at 50% capacity. Everybody's going to be wearing masks and gloves. And everybody, please understand, just because we're opening, there's going to be a lot of people that aren't going to come to bars and restaurants because they're still afraid. And the more we can market safety, that our customer safety is as important as our product, is going to be a big push forward for the Village of Lake Orion. So I, I know we got to be aggressive and it's, it's, it's a time where it's risky. But I think our business district with M24 development and what we're coming out of, I think we got to have a little open mind.
Anyone else? I, I had thought, in very similar perspectives, Mr. Narsh, I had thought, gosh, I'd like to see a lot more of the money spent. And what kept coming up in my mind was advertising on the ground, boots on the ground, local advertising. I'm not so sure that a lot of money spent with like New Moons or some of the Twitter or other possibilities like that will, will bring the returns that we need. And Chief just hit on something really good there about the safety of the environment that people will be looking to come back into. There's a good way to market that. That's really good. And then I also keep thinking about when we emerge, because we have talked tonight about our 501(c)(5) for Friends. We also have our Parks and Rec 501(c)(3). And then we also have separate donations or dollars to give to the DDA as well. So there's three different parties there that are going to be asking our businesses for donations and money. And that, I don't think that's going to work well.
It's not going to be asking for money. That's what we just talked about. We, that's why our budget is, that's why we've designed the budget the way we did. We're not asking for money from the businesses. And, and I just wanted to mention, there are some, there are other things that we are planning to do before the fiscal year is over. Right now, what we're talking about is next year alone. So for those of you who are wishing, we were talking about some of the things that we've recently been talking about, like a banner across M24, things like that. Those are, those are signs and things that we hope to do before this year ends. And.
So we'll still be competing for funds for the Parks and Rec and the 501(c)(5) Friends. We have Friends of the Parks, we have Friends of the Village. I'm just saying. I, I support the Parks first. But.
Well, the other reason to have a 501(c)(3) is because when we are trying to do grants, when we're trying to apply for grants, we will be looked on more favorably if we can be a 501(c)(3) when we make the application. Also, if we want to, there are, there are restrictions in how we can use our public funds as a DDA. If there are funds that can be coming from a downtown nonprofit organization, there aren't as many that, well, the restrictions aren't different. So for instance, if there was a business assistance program, if this were a, if this Friends of Downtown organization had been around a little bit longer and they had some funds built up, we might have been able to put together a business assistance program that was specifically giving money to businesses. And the DDA cannot do that because it's public funds. Looked like Jerry, you had a question?
Yeah, Molly, how many other DDAs across the county have 501(c)(3)'s currently?
Um, there's, a lot of us, a lot of the DDAs have a nonprofit arm.
Okay, and you mentioned. Okay, and you mentioned that there are different restrictions along with that. Is there a legal document or a list of those restrictions that you could present to council that we could take a look at and understand how the 501(c)(3) impacts your organization differently than, say, Friends of the Parks?
Oh, um, the, the restrictions I'm talking about are PA 57, which is the recodeified DDA law. That's the one I'm talking about. As far as a nonprofit organization, the Parks nonprofit organization and the downtown nonprofit organization are probably similar. And they're probably, I mean, I maybe don't understand your question.
You had mentioned that there were restrictions, and that's not on the 501(c)(3) as it relates to the DDA?
It's, how the DDA can use their funds, that's where the restrictions are. There's, we need to make sure that we're using our funds for the promotion of the downtown as a whole. That's our, our job. And the, the restrictions, there is not that restriction for a nonprofit because it's a nonprofit and it has to abide by the bylaws that it, that have, that created it or, you know, that they abide by.
Right. Now, now, did you guys create bylaws for your 501(c)(3)? Because you got to have a board, but you have those bylaws. And does council have a copy of those bylaws? Because I think that would maybe answer some of the questions.
Right, right. The, like I said, the, we, we just got the paperwork, so we can present that now. But we were on hold until, until we got approved. But we got approved right at the end of March, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I would just request that the council members get a copy of the bylaws just to see how that impacts, how it can be used and how we can creatively use those dollars.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
Just real quick, just to jump back to what Mr. Narsh had mentioned a moment ago. Molly has actively worked on a program for, talking about safety and people being back to business. And she's currently working on a program, and I think she should probably touch on that a little bit, some, some kits that they're putting together. So I'm not sure if the council's aware of that, but that's another program that we're trying to probably.
If it's all right with you, I'd like to continue talking about the budget. And then after the budget, I can go over current programs if that's all right.
We do, we do have about a 10-minute time limit left before we need to change over to the other meeting for on TV to.
All right. Shall I go on then? Continue?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so the DDA board held budget workshops from February 13th through March 5th. On March 10th, they, the DDA board received the budget and we were ready to review it at the end of the month. But then we had the stay home, stay safe order, so we had to cancel that meeting. We rescheduled the meeting again when the virtual, the virtual meeting order was, we were allowed to do those again. The budget is reflecting the priorities that were set by the DDA board. Promotions for the Restore M24 Construction Product, Project, and regular activities of the day, DDA plus uncertain circumstances because of COVID-19. Originally, our budget was planned, it had a planned reduction in fund balance of $22,000. And that, that is traditionally the amount that was taken and it represents our historic preservation facade grant. We made some changes and now we've reduced that, reduced the overall budget and we are not taking money from fund balance at this time at all. And this is our, this is my, my copy that I used for, for the DDA board so they could see where we felt the, the changes would take place. So for general activities, we've reduced costs by approximately just under $15,000. For the organization committee, we reduced costs by $3,000. For the design committee, for the design committee, we decided on both revenue, the revenue side and on the expense side, we decided to remove the possibility of receiving grants for this upcoming year. So it looks like we've reduced it by $138,000, but $100,000 of that is reflecting the fact that we're not, not thinking that we'll be receiving grants. So it's also in our revenue side as well, that reduction of $100,000. Economic development, we're reduced by $4,000. Promotions, we've reduced by $4,000. Capital projects, we reduced by $32,000 for a total appropriations of $196,850, which is what we thought our revenues would be. Are there any questions?
Molly, I got a question.
Yes.
Going back a step for like the lighting for the Christmas lights and stuff downtown. I haven't got with Chris yet, but I think the flags were looking pretty bad last year, a lot of them. Actually, I wouldn't have even, even have put them up. But I would also like to see all of Flint Street done from 24 right up to Washington. I think we need probably another 20, 30 sets would be fantastic and if that can be worked in.
Is that for Memorial Day? When does that, when do we normally put those up, John?
More Memorial Day and they stay up, I think you request to have them up most of the summer.
Yeah, through the Fourth of July, I think. I do have, I have, I got a box of flags last year. They didn't use all of them, so I know that we do have some new flags. But thank you for letting me know. I can, I mean.
I'll try to remember and get ahold of Chris and you can too and have him do an inventory of how many he needs. Because they, they looked, most of them looked pretty bad last year. Can you hear me?
All right, that's. All right, that's the end of my presentation.
Question. Hey Molly, I'm looking at the very first page, which in my, it, it's just confusing, I'm just saying, because it says packet page nine, but I think you have it as thirteen. But nineteen, twenty, and I know we're talking about twenty, twenty-one. Estimated revenues was one point two-five million. And twenty-twenty-one, the estimated revenues are seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we're down by five hundred thousand. What's that? You know?
Yes.
Just a moment, I'm bringing it back up again.
Yeah, that's the.
Oh, that's our water sewer fund. I think I just answered my own question.
Okay.
So, because in the tail end here, you're showing that there's a, um, about ninety-six thousand dollars in cuts. The hundred thousand is, I use John's term fluff, because it's a grant we're hoping to get, or not, if you're taking it back out.
Right.
So ninety-six thousand dollars in cuts, but the fund balance at the end of the year, compared to last year, only goes up thirty-four thousand bucks. So I'm just thinking in my mind, there's about a fifty-five thousand dollars of additional expenditure. And I'm wondering where that's going, maybe Slater, parking lots? Do you know off the top of your head?
I mean, are you looking at?
The very last.
Oh, is it, is the, is the, um, program moving money for the fund balance that shouldn't be, or? Is it, is it a, is it a math program, a math problem within the program, or is it, I mean, we, the, um, the fund balance that we have at the end of June twenty-twenty should be, that we're planning to have it be the same in June twenty-twenty-one?
Well, it's showing two hundred, it's showing a thirty-four thousand dollar gain.
Well, the original, the original budget, you were projecting to use fifty-six thousand dollars of fund balance.
Oh, okay, I guess I can tell you about that.
That's it. Thank you, Joe.
All right.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
That adds up to the ninety thousand dollars difference. Thank you.
All right. Um, we, we borrowed, um, from our property acquisition account, um, to pay for the parking lot in front of the art center. Um, and we needed to pay the township in full, and we, um, made an agreement, um, as a board, that we would pay ourselves back. So if you look down here, it says, um, transfer to capital improvement fund. Um, still doing that. However, it should be, um, oh, here, and then we took it out again. So we were planning to, um, pay the property improvement fund, and then we chose not to. Um, we're not doing that this year, um, because we decided not to take anything from fund balance. Um, that's something that, uh, you know, we'll have to keep track of, and we'll have to put it back into our budget again to pay back the property acquisition fund. But, um, I think that is, we had the twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars, um, for the facade grant, and then the thirty-five, thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty to pay back, um, to pay back into the property acquisition fund. So when I originally said, what you're saying is, originally, I said we were only taking, the original budget was only taking out twenty-two thousand, but that is incorrect. Is that what you're noticing?
No, Joe helped me. Um, but let me ask, why are you not going to pay that thirty-four thousand dollars to the township? Why not? Why are you postponing?
No, 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 no. We paid the township in full. That's all in full. We were paying, um, the DDA property acquisition fund back over, um, over a, a series of years.
Okay. We've come up to the end of our time. Anybody else have any other questions? And so the recommendation to move forward is to receive and file, entertain a motion. I need no other question.
I'll move.
Court.
I'll move by Mr. Matheson. Please call out your name when you do that. That would be helpful.
Support Teresa.
Supported by Teresa Rutt. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Abs. Abs.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Narsch?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
Vanport Fleet?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. I believe that concludes this proposal meeting. And Joe, uh, did we want to try to talk about the other item yet?
Well, the regular meeting starts in nine minutes, and we need to give Ian five minutes to prep and change over. Plus, we have to sign out and then sign back in. So I would suggest we hold it, defer this to, uh, that May fifth meeting or some other meeting night. We wouldn't want to schedule it. Or if you want to take it up later on tonight.
We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Susan, are we all gonna go off and then got, gotta redo it?
We have to do it that way because of the cable broadcasting.
Because of the timing, the Zoom allows per meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so I missed the motion. Who, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Ms. Rutt's making the motion to adjourn.
And sport. Not Jerry speaking. Okay, thank you.
And I think we could just say all those in favor indicate with aye. Aye. Pose. We need to adjourn. See you in nine minutes. Joe, Joe?
Five minutes.